We would like to say before I ask for that motion. Okay, with that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Munson?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. With the board's approval, we appreciate your support on tonight's personnel items this evening. We were, had the opportunity to shift existing resources to bring on two new team members to our leadership team. And two of their here this evening, so I'd like to just briefly introduce them. You can wave and be recognized, so the board can put a face with the name. Mrs. Megan Craycraft, she has over eighteen years of experience in the educational setting, eight of those in administration, with extensive experience in all facets of special education administration and programming, supporting students, staff, and building leaders in co-taught and self-contained. She will be serving as an Assistant Director of Student Services. And her background, including her administration experience, she also has ten years of teaching experience in K-12 in a variety of settings, co-teaching, resource, therapeutic day, and self-contained. So she's going to be a tremendous resource for our buildings, for our students, and our families. And she's also a resident of our local community. So we're excited to welcome you, Megan. Welcome. And then the second adjustment that we're, we are able to make, and we're very excited to bring on another team member, that's Mr. William Lipke. He will be serving as the school safety coordinator for the district. He's a United States Marine Corps veteran with twenty-plus years of law enforcement experience as a police officer, instructor, and trainer, including in school-based police work and firearm instruction. Upon his retirement as a police officer, he took on the role as a senior training specialist for a large healthcare organization, designing and implementing curriculum and tactics to armed public safety officers across the organization. Extensive training and certifications, including in situational awareness, de-escalation, conflict resolution, site safety, scenario-based training, firearms and defensive tactics, and active threat response, among many others. Mr. Lipke is also a member of our local community, and we are thrilled to bring him aboard the team. And we know he's also going to be a great resource and wealth of experience for our team. So, welcome, Mr. Lipke.
Welcome to 201, both of you. Our next section here, we're going to move on to our action items. Our first action item, I'm looking for a motion to approve our administrator multi-year contracts as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve administrator multi-year contracts as presented.
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. With the next motion here, I need, am looking for a motion to approve the amendment to the superintendent contract as presented.
I'll motion to approve the amendment of the superintendent contract as presented.
I'll second. And a roll call, please.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. I know I speak for the board when I say we are very grateful and thankful to have your leadership in our district and look forward to continuing to work with you throughout the coming years. Our next action item, 4.03, for the MEE memorandum of understanding. Is there anything you want to highlight from this?
Yes, this memorandum of understanding is an agreement. This is an agreement with the Menucha Education Association. And this is to establish a stipend for behavior interventionist who possesses an active board-certified behavior analyst certification. So this is a specialized certification to support the needs of students requiring very intensive supports. It gives us immediacy and flexibility, and eliminates the need to contract specialized staff with these credentials. So this is a recommendation that we have to ensure that we can bring this support and are able to staff for this highly specialized role.
Mrs. Teneli, your question from earlier today, I know you asked me the difference between the MA-30 and MA-45 has to do with where they start on the scale and filling, in kind of compensating for that gap there. Any questions or concerns on this MOU? If not, I ask for a motion to approve the MEEA memorandum of understanding as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the MEEA memorandum of understanding as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. We will move on to our discussion and information items. The first is a preliminary FY25 budget. I assume Mrs. Robinson?
Yes, Mary. Mary Robinson, chief school business official, will give us a very preliminary look at the work we're doing for our upcoming fiscal year budget. Mary?
Hi. My own? There we go, sorry. Just as a reminder, we don't bring the budget for approval until September, so we have a lot of time. A lot can happen between now and then. But just wanted to give you a really early look, just so you have an idea of what we're planning. So, just to recap, the current year budget, just always like to go over how we're going to finish the year out. I'll give you a final once it's happened, but a lot can happen between the last, what do we have? Eleven days left of the month. So, if you recall, we approved the budget with a $48,000 operating surplus, which is basically just balance. That's nothing in the grand scheme of things. So we're looking like our revenues and expenditures will come in between, just right about budget, 100%. It could be slightly less, maybe 101 at most, but we're pretty much on budget in both areas. Like I said, in the next two weeks, things that could happen, our final property tax distribution. So we're budgeted $5 million. It's all about timing. It's not that we wouldn't get it, but when we get it after that June 30th, it just makes things look a little odd. But it would be nothing to panic about. Again, all, the items remaining are just timing issues. So that's why our ending balance can just be slightly different. But I'll fill the board in at the next meeting to exactly where we landed, so.
And I know you've said before that they all pay differently. I mean,
Yeah.
So, we're still going to get, I mean, doesn't somebody come in in like September?
Yeah, no, so they're all different, like, so Grundy, so Will and Kendall, we get half of the, around half, around 50%. Grundy County, we don't get any of the tax revenue until after July 1st. Like, we'll probably get it on July 1st or July 2nd, but historically, we get about 50%. So that 50%, even if it's off a little bit, it's just how their collection has gone, it's just varied, so I have to guess. So I use the last couple of years, and that's where I've budgeted this $5 million. But already, we've already received two payments from Kendall and Will, and we haven't gotten anything from Grundy. So it's just the timing, it's when they, when they finalize things, when they mail their bills, when they collect. So again, it's, it's timing, it's not if, it's just when. So just to go over the budget, just a recap of what is included in the revenue. As we go through, I'll give you my assumptions that I've used for the budget. But this is just the three main things, the local, the state, and the federal. The biggest portion of our budget is, of revenue is from local property taxes. So the assumptions that I've used this year, when we look at local, we, again, we know the 2024 tax levy, and that's where that, we did see a 9.44 EAV increase. And that's where we've already received payments from Kendall and Will for the 2024 tax levy. So then, when we look at the 2025 levy, because that's what we'll be getting next spring, which is the budget we are talking about, we'll only get that for Will and Kendall. So I'm estimating 6%. The last few years, we've seen increases, seven, eight, nine percent. So six, again, is conservative, but it's a little higher. I've typically estimated five, and then it's always, it's always more. So I crept it up a little bit this year to six, and I still think that's reasonable with all the growth that we are seeing, especially in Will and Kendall, so. And then, just the other, this is just some other local. Our interest revenue has continued to do well, so I just increased that slightly. And then, at the state level, so our evidence-based funding, which we typically get this finalized amount over the summer. It will definitely be before I'm asking you to approve a budget. But if you remember from last year, we did drop to Tier 2, so we did receive $257,000 of new money. So based on that, I went with 250 into this budget estimate. There is the possibility that we would swing back to Tier 1. I don't know if that'll happen this year, maybe next year, because we're right on that border. So we'll just have to see. Again, I expect to see that within the next month, and then that could swing things.
So can you explain again the differ, I mean, what happened, how do we, what is Tier 1?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a big calculation, and it's based on several factors, but it's basically the revenue that we're able to generate through local revenue, through local and state. And so, and then their enrollment comes into play. So with enrollment, basically kind of flattening out, and then our revenue going up, we had a few years of really high CPPRT, which is considered a local revenue, and that shot some districts out of Tier 1 to Tier 2. And now that CPPRT revenue has gone back down. I mean, it's only about, you know, the difference of $500,000 to $1 million, but just that, because we're so close right on that border. So that's what, that's what happened and why we got pushed in. So now they, there's different bands of adequacy, how adequate they say we're funded, and we have reached 80%, and that's where Tier 2 starts. So, any lower, we drop back down.
So when do they make the decision? When do you find out?
I'll find out typically in the month of July. I think when I gave the board an update last July, I already knew, so.
Did they change that percentage, that 80%? It used to be in the 70s, right?
They change them every year.
Okay.
They're getting higher and higher, because more districts are what they consider adequately funded, so the percentages keep going up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then our federal, breakfast and lunch, we just pretty much flat, like our programs remain the same. But with our grant, I went ahead and included the amounts that we've already received allotments for. And then, the unknown right now really is Title 2. So typically, when we get the application open, we get the allotments for Title 1, 2, and 4 altogether. And this year, Title 2 has not been given to us. It is not to say that we won't receive it, but right now, I've assumed the budget without it, because we have not been given that allotment yet. So if we do receive that, you can see last year was $98,000. If we do receive that, I'll add that back in the budget when we get notification. And we also haven't received our Title 3 allotment, but that's normal. For some reason, that one always comes a little bit later, so.
And again, this is flat to this fiscal year?
These are actual, they already announced, and they're very similar. They're in the range of what we received this year.
But slightly higher, slightly?
Well, the thing about these grants is, they come out with an initial allotment, and then somewhere in the middle of the year, they, we get a little bit more of rollover, what's not been used by other districts. So these are in line with what they were at the beginning of the year last year. Expenditures, you can see, as always, our salary and benefits make up about 75% of our budget. So when we're talking about anything that really impacts the budget, it's, it's people and the benefits that come along with those people. So for my budget this year, I assumed all of the new staff recommendations and salaries that the board has approved. Our health insurance, if you recall from last year, our health insurance costs went up pretty substantially. This year, we have kind of leveled out. The changes that we made have worked so far. But just to be prepared, I've increased it 5%. Grundy County Co-op, that's another one of those meetings that happens in the summer as students move in, move out, and we see which children will be serviced by the Co-op. Then we, we sit down with the Co-op and we get estimates, so that has not happened yet. 5%, I feel like is a reasonable increase, just based on them having increases within their salary. So I've left it at 5%, but again, that's something I can update if I get something, some new information. And then the biggest change that you'll notice is for transportation. So obviously, everyone knows that our transportation will be shifting to District 111. So District 111 will be paying out all of the expenses. So where we currently pay out our salaries out of Fund 40, and then our IMRF benefit, Social Security, Medicare, out of Fund 51, so 50 and 51, those all needed to get shifted. So next year will just kind of be an adjustment, and then we'll eventually catch up. But next year, the budget, this, this budget looks a little different than in the past.
So could we go back to health insurance? I know last year, we, we spoke, it was, to get back on track, I think it was 3%. You had estimated the increase, and now 5%. I think last year, we spoke about what do we think it takes to be at the right level? And it is, so 5% will, I'd much rather budget and then pay out instead of going over, right? So that, that's a level where we think we're going to really be hitting the target, right? That's?
Yeah, and why it was only 3% last year was because it was 3% over actuals. If I looked at what it was, because we ended the budget way over budget, but I did 3% last year over actuals, so that was actually the larger increase. But this year, I would think 5% just natural, some of that is even just an increase in staff, the cost of their benefits. So I, I would, my hope is that 5% covers us and that we break even on that. And that's where we're at this year.
Perfect, thank you. And then my final question was, as you were talking about transportation, how did you go about with the assumption, based on what we paid this year? Or with just assumption of what you think it might look like going forward? How did?
For the total transportation.
For transportation, yeah, for the, the cost estimate?
Yeah, well, so some of it I know actuals. So, you know, I can look at IMRF and Social Security, and I know the percentages. I'm not going to know exactly. It's going to be a little more guessing than typical. So typically, I can look at what we paid out in staff and say, okay, we're giving them, you know, a 4% increase. I can just increase it by 4%. So, because our structure's going to be a little bit different, it just involves some best guessing from knowing how many routes we have, how many staff we have, what has been paid out in the past. I will not be surprised if my Fund 40 budget is not as good as the other funds. But I believe I have enough in there to cover, so it's been a little bit of just some, some really good educated guesses.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is mostly for, we're always so impressed with your targeted assumptions and your, your, your way to know what's ahead of us. So I appreciate that with the unknown, I assume we're taking it very cautiously, and I really appreciate you looking at it that way.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
I have one more.
Okay.
So going back to health, did we hit, was this year, did we have more payouts this year on the, on the health insurance?
Yeah, so, yeah, the final.
More sick people, or?
Um, no, not really like that. So because we're self-funded, we pay out claims every month. So we just haven't received the June bill yet, so everything's just not final. But we looked at preliminary, some of the claims, and everything kind of seems to be typical of what we see.
So it was a normal year, as far as?
It was a pretty normal year, yeah. And we had made some changes to the benefits, which really helped us as far as costs, so. But yeah, we always have, you know, a few people can really impact it, because we are self-funded, but that seems to happen every year, different people, same people, it always, so, yeah. And then just some of the larger things that I included in the budget are most of the things, are actually everything on here the board pretty much does know about. The one thing I want to mention is the kitchen renovation down at Menucha Elementary School. It's going amazing. I went, I have some pictures to share with the board. That was, that walk-in freezer cooler was the original to the building. The difference that it has made, that they've done the demolition, they have installed the new cooler. It's just, it's amazing, the amount of storage that they're going to gain, both dry and cold storage because of it. So I'll share pictures with the board, but that project's going really well. And so this is what overall the budget summary looks like. So, when I said this today, when I started, that we approved the budget with a $48,000 operating surplus, the number on this spreadsheet that would match that is that $315,000, that total operating funds revenues over expenditures. So that would be, right now, our operating budget would have a surplus of $315,000. Some of the things I mentioned, that you can see the transportation fund, you can see that deficit of $195,000. What I believe will happen is that we will catch up with that. So next year, we will have more expenses because of those pension and retirement costs. And then, because of that, that will now be part of our state claim, and then the following year, we'll get a higher reimbursement. So, again, timing thing, but we will see a deficit. We have very good fund balance in Fund 40, so there's no concern to me there about the timing. And then, any other, the deficit of, in the education fund, that's just offset by our working cash. So the goal would be to get that more in balance, and I'll continue to work over the next couple of months to try to get that balanced. And then, really, just the, the overall, we have that overall surplus. Really, the non-operating surplus is coming mostly from our life safety. So we're due for a life safety survey in 2026. So what has been happening is that we've been collecting taxes and building up that fund, so that when we do have that survey and we have projects, we will be able to, to complete those projects with life safety funding. So that, I'll click back real quick, that Fund 90, we're building, but we don't have much to expend this next year, until that survey's done.
So, last year, we didn't have as much cushion, correct, for this year? So this?
Um, at this point.
Was it a little bit slimmer?
Yeah, like, when we, when the board approved it, it was $48,000, yeah, so this is a little bit more right now.
Okay.
Yeah, not to say that some more expenses won't pop up in the next couple of months. I wouldn't want to be too tight this early, so. And then, yeah, next month, I'll probably just come up in discussion again and give you some updates if I have any. Or no, actually, we'll actually, we'll bring a tentative budget, I'm sorry. We'll bring the tentative in July, and then August would be when I would just give some updates, and then we'll ask the board to approve it in September. Any questions?
Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Robinson. Next, we have our 2025 Five Essentials data.
Okay, Mr. Sousa's going to get the presentation pulled up. I'm going to provide just a brief snapshot overview of the aggregate District Five Essentials data report for 2025. We just received that within the last week or so. And I think everyone's familiar with what Five Essentials is, but we've now received the preliminary reports, and those will be released publicly on June 30. So today, we'll just take a look at the district overview, kind of a high-level overview, but know that our building leaders and their teams have been looking in great depth at this data. So the Five Essential Survey, as many are familiar, has been in place since about 2013, and it measures a school's strength in five essential areas. These are organizational conditions that influence student learning. And the research base shows that when you are strong and growing in these areas, it leads to more improved student outcomes. Basically, how organized are you for school improvement to occur? That it actually is measurable in terms of student learning. Effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involved families, supportive environment, and ambitious instruction. The new update this year is that the scoring benchmarks were updated for Spring 2025. Previously, we were operating off the 2010 norms, and so this has been updated using the 2024 data. So the reports that we received this year is a look from last year to this year. So we're essentially looking at new norms. There are some ways where you can drill down and look at a comparison, but essentially, what we are looking for is where their growth, where it's showing we're on the right track, and where there are areas where we need to dig in a little bit more. And you recall, this is just an annual survey, so going forward in the future, we're looking at our tool that we'll be using Panorama to see how we can gather more frequent data in specific areas. So these new benchmarks give us essentially an average score for a year against all of the schools who administered this survey. And it gives us a range in how we fall in comparison to these other averages.
Are they Illinois schools or national schools?
These are Illinois schools. So we do look at ourselves in comparison to Illinois schools, and then we're looking at ourselves compared to ourselves in terms of previous year, and then also schools to schools. So the scoring update means that more schools' measures and scores are falling probably more likely into the average or neutral category. That's not a bad thing to be in that space, but what that means is you could have very positive responses, and it still could have you an overall essential as an kind of average or neutral, even if the majority of the responses were strongly agree and agree. It just compares you relative to how other respondents responded for their schools. So just because something is in the neutral or average category doesn't mean it's bad. That's essentially what I'm saying. But stronger is the goal. So when schools are improving or making growth in those areas, that is going to lead to the conditions for measurable school improvement. We had a strong response rate on our survey this year. We had almost all of our schools hitting the parent response rate, and that target was 20% to get their report. And then all of our schools met our student and teacher response rates. So they did a good job. I know it's hard to, people get kind of burned out on surveys, but we were able to gather important input from all of those groups. So an overall view is, that's the kind of that colored snapshot you can see there, supportive environment. We were able to maintain, and we're strong in that area. And all of the other measures, we have growth that we've demonstrated, that, oh, let me move back one. Growth that we were able to. Geez, I'm, excuse me. Keeps turning out on me, I apologize. Okay, so in supportive environment, we were able to maintain a strong score in that area. Involved families, collaborative teachers, ambitious instruction, and effective leaders. You can see those are all in the neutral category. However, there is growth demonstrated in all of those areas, and I'm going to highlight each of those briefly. So we're moving in the right direction. If I had a takeaway from the data overall, we are moving in the right direction. And of course, this is all of our schools combined together, and we do look at this with schools broken down as well. Looking at the, a quick dashboard view, where are we performing the highest? That's collaborative practices, and that is an increase of 16 points. So that was an area that teams and our leaders across the district and our staff were working very intentionally on. And so we're very pleased to see that that is being felt and heard by our staff. Academic personalism is an area of high, high performance, student-teacher trust, and safety. Areas where we've improved the most, teacher influence, and then parent involvement in school. And then in the bottom half of this slide, these are the areas where we're performing the lowest. Now, keep in mind, that's relative. That doesn't mean that these are dismal scores. This means relatively speaking, we have room for growth to move those to a more strong, positive response. Okay, so looking at effective leaders, it breaks down what the, is measured inside of this category. Essentially, is there a practice of shared leadership in place? Are there high goals for quality instruction? Is there a trusting and respectful relationship? And is there professional development advancement for staff? And then how are we using our resources? So we, there was growth on an aggregate across all of those measures. Teacher influence, instructional leadership, program coherence, and teacher principal trust. And so while that moves us into a neutral category, when we look at this data, we can break down, and we can see, okay, maybe we had more in the agree category than the strongly agree. And then we can dig in to kind of ask those questions, why? And work with our teams to see what we can do to improve and grow in those areas. Collaborative teachers, you can see the breakdown of what's measured inside of these categories. Collaborative practices was a large increase there with 16 positive point increase. Collective responsibility, that means we have a strong school commitment, and we are all in and working together to support our students. Quality professional development was another increase, along with school commitment, and then teacher-to-teacher trust.
Numbers mean, like, 70, is it 71?
So these are, these are scale scores, and then underneath every scale score, there's 100% of how the respondents, and it's a Likert scale, and it ranges from strongly disagree, disagree, agree, to strongly agree. So when we dig deeper, and I mean, this, I could share with you, you know, hundreds of slides, so I'm just giving you the high-level view. But when we click underneath that, we can see what percentage agree and strongly agree. And so for most of these, we're at, you know, 85% plus to the positive on that end of the scale. But it is important to look at degrees. We don't want, you know, kind of just We don't want, you know, kind of just that middle of the road. Yeah, somewhat, yeah, somewhat agree. That doesn't indicate that there's strong, you know, strong conditions in that area in place. So these are scale scores, those are not percentages.
Thank you.
Involved families, we had overall and an aggregate positive increases with how parents are seen as partners in helping their students learn. Parents, valuing parents' input and participation in advancing the school's mission, and then supporting our efforts to strengthen the community resource connection there. So again, moving in the right direction. And then when we dig in deeper, and we're looking by building, and we're looking in each of the respective areas, we are finding those areas where we can target to improve more. Supportive environment, we are at a strong level here, and we are essentially maintaining that. There was a negative one change, but when you look at that on the scale score, it's still very strong, meaning the vast majority of respondents, in this case, what you're looking at here are students, are responding to the positive. And now we're looking at degrees of positive. And then also, you know, are there some percentages that aren't feeling that? Well, with Five E data, we can't tell who or what, or it's harder to target because we can't break it down to, you know, student level, grade level. With Panorama, we will be able to do that, though. So this is a strong area for us as a district, you know, previously. And we were able to maintain and grow that. Okay, and now collaborative teachers. I think I already had that one, I don't know how this jumped back, I apologize. Okay, we should be on ambitious instruction, I believe. All right. Okay, here we are. So then this area essentially is student responses. And then there's a category that teachers are responding. And this is essentially, are the classes challenging and engaging? Instruction is clear and well-structured? And then the type of engagement that the students are engaged in. So we can listen to our students and say, you know, are they feeling challenged? Are they feeling that their teacher challenges them to do their best work? Are they feeling that it's clear for them what they need to do to improve their learning? And again, this is all anchored on that research base of what needs to be in place to get the best learning and outcomes for our students. So we're in a solid place. And I'm very pleased that our school improvement planning efforts that our teams engaged in really matched the targeted areas that we know we can be more intentional about growing so that we can continue to see positive growth in these areas. And then the supplemental measures, there's a kind of a long list here. But I just wanted to point out that in many of these areas, even the ones where we had the most positive change, we're still in that neutral category. But we're on the right path when it comes to innovation, teacher safety, reflective dialogue. And you can see the positive plus change there in that first column. Socialization of new teachers was another area of strength on down through the list. So we are able to use this data at a district level, but also at a building level to ensure that our efforts are targeting those opportunities that we most have in order to grow and ensure our schools are organized for school improvement. And our leaders and our leadership teams have been looking a great deal at this data. And there's many celebrations with some of the growth that I just pointed out. And then when you break that down by school, you're also able to see where are there some pieces that maybe aren't moving in the right direction or that do jump out as areas that we need to focus in on? And then what is our plan for engaging our building leadership teams and our staff in those conversations? So we have a lot of information to work with, and we'll have more when we're able to utilize our Panorama tool. So that's another piece we'll do in connecting that. I just wanted to reiterate, these reports are released publicly. And then they do appear on the Illinois School Report Card that comes out in the fall. And that's just kind of the aggregate view. But if there's, you know, more specific questions or you'd like to take a look below the top level of that data there, I'm happy to answer them, you know, at any time or sit down with you and show you how the data reports work.
Remind me, will Panorama be in place of this or in conjunction with this?
So as of this past school year, Panorama, we were, the state had allowed schools to use Panorama in place of Five Essentials. So we don't have that yet solidified to say, you know, which topics would align. But we're working on that, and we'll have confirmation. That would be the goal, so that we don't have to do both of these. And then we can meet the state's compliance obligation. But we can also get data that we can use and have it a little bit more frequently and more timely. Because remember, this data was back in February. This was collected in February. So it's, you know, mid-June now. So hopefully in place.
Other questions about this information for Superintendent Kinder?
Not a question. I wanted to share that one of the most reflective pieces is the amount of participation that we're getting from the families. I think that's more than we've had across the board. And just very rough numbers, it's roughly, it's over twenty percent across the district. So that's, you think about a thousand families are going in and trying to help with their opinions. I think that, that in and of itself shows a connection, that they want to be heard and want to share what's going on. So I think that it, it looks like a great level of participation, which is the first step. I think that's really great.
Yeah, I agree. Our buildings, our principals, our teams, they did a great job getting the word out and really making it known to families, like, hey, we value your input, please give us your input. And then scanning the parent reports that we were able to get, not all of our schools hit that. Some of them fell just short, even by point-two percent. We thought we had it, but we fell just short. The input is good input, and it talks about parents, how they feel about the communication, the connectedness to school, what's their overall satisfaction. So there's a general positive trend. So we do feel good about that, and we know that we're not hearing from all families. So that's something we'll continue to emphasize when we use Panorama.
I'm actually interested to see what the change to Parents Square does with parents feeling more like, on top of what's happening in the buildings, because it's so user-friendly versus trying to follow through your emails. It'll be interesting to kind of follow that with that change.
Yeah, that's a great point. With Parents Square, how much better can we, you know, more effectively can we communicate regarding wanting to hear their voice? And then not only that, hey, we heard you, now here's something we're doing as a result or something that we're going to work on because you did share your voice with us.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the Goal Two update.
All right, Erin is adding in my presentation now. Excellent, okay. So tonight, we're going to review Goal Two, which is creating a safe and engaging learning environment. In the short time between when students left school in May, in this board meeting, our administrators have dedicated three days to analyzing data for the district, building, and student level. But to be honest, it's probably been a lot more than those three days. But those are the three days that we've been together with them. We worked with them in collaborative PLCs on May 28th, the 29th, as well as June 4th. Tonight, we're going to review a little bit about what was discussed in those PLCs and those meetings and how it relates to Goal Two. So we're going to start with DSA data. And again, this is not anything that is new to you. Ms. McCarroll showed you guys the DSA data back in the May board meeting. So you may be familiar with this picture already. Keep in mind that red is our need for instruction or our concern areas. Blue is typically developing, and green shows a strength. So this was our spring data in 24, 25, so this was our last data point. The next few slides are going to show us more at the grade level information and improvements or changes from the beginning of the year to the end of the year from those red bands. So those students that are at need, if we look at this, and again, that does not show, that's not a great picture from where you guys are sitting. But what we're really looking at is increases to the blues and increases to the greens as that is the changes that we want to see. We want to see more blue and green on these slides. So our admin teams have dove into this data specifically for their building. And where are there more concerning areas? So if we see students that are scoring in red in these areas, what does that mean for the building? And where do they need to target some instruction or intervention or target some areas there? So you can see here, we've got our third and fourth grade, the fall to the spring. Again, we want to see an increase in that blue and green, a decrease in the red, which we see throughout this slide as well. Then when we go to fifth and sixth grade, that pre and post, we see again that increase in the blues and greens. When we look at the seventh and eighth grade, we see quite a bit of red or need in that seventh-grade group there, which is the top group. And then the eighth-grade group, we see a lot of improvement there as well. But you guys can see that that seventh-grade group is definitely a group that the junior high team is targeting and saying, okay, what do we have going on here? What more do we need to do for this level? So again, that's just a snapshot of the conversations that our building administrators had with their teams on the 28th. So we met with them on the 28th and allowed them time. We kind of went through all of the different data points. And then they spent the majority of the time on the 28th preparing their data to meet with their building-level leadership teams on the 29th. So that entire day on the 28th, they were working within their building-level teams to truly analyze their building-based data and determine what their next steps are within this goal. Our next area that we looked at was the Five Essentials data, and you guys can see this. If you are looking at the one that's uploaded into Board Docs, it may look a little bit different from this. I updated some of this data more recently this morning. So the one that's on the slide deck or the one that's on the screens up here is the most current. So again, that green is a strong area, the yellow is neutral. If we were looking at the one that was in there previously, there was an orange component, and that was from the 24 data, the 2024 data. So this is a snapshot of our district survey results. What we're looking at in tonight, specifically related to strategic Goal Two, is supportive environment category, which continues to be one of our highest areas. Building administrators were able to dive into this area with their Five Essential data on June 4th. It was not released for us to look at at the end of May. I think it was released like, yeah, like, yeah, it was like released on like late night, like May 30th or something like that, it was kind of odd. So they were able to look at this data and see what it looks like specifically for their building. To kind of look at a greater, enlarge those areas that we were looking at on that last slide. The sixty, the academic personalization was a sixty, a strong. The student-teacher trust was sixty, strong. The peer support for academic work was a neutral. And safety perception was a neutral as well. So these are all areas, just because it's in strong, just because it's neutral, doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily be satisfied with that. We're always looking at improvements. So our teams are continuing to dive into this to say, what more can we do to improve these scores? We want the students to feel safe, to feel happy, and to feel connected to our schools, just the same as we want our staff and our families.
So how, I'm sorry, why is the Board Docs different?
It was the last year's data that was in there. So I've updated it with this year's data. Yep. Yeah. All right. And then looking at, and we can upload the most recent one, my updated presentation, to it later tonight. Then this, another area that we started to look at just this year was attendance data. Our school district has always had pretty positive attendance data. It has never really been a concern. And even if you're looking at this snapshot here, you can see that we're well below the state level of the attendance data. So this graph shows the percentage of students who miss ten percent or more of school days within the school year, either with a valid excuse or without a valid excuse. So our average is much lower than the state average. But if you look at it this way, which gives us a trend over the last several years, you can see that that trend has greatly increased, especially after 2001, 2002, or I'm sorry, 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024. So this is something that we're going to start paying more attention to. Our buildings have always worked on the individual level with students when we see that students are truant, when they're missing a lot of days of school. But now we're going to start doing more global campaigns. So you can see some of the information on, Attendance Matters is one of the big global campaigns that schools can utilize to help increase their attendance. They talk about like how every single day, every single minute of the school day counts. And you can find a lot of data on the number, like if you come tardy to school for half an hour each day, what does that impact as each, as you go throughout the entire school year? So our goal will be having students in the school, in the schools, in their learning environments as much as possible. So this is definitely something that we want to pay attention to as well.
So when you just said, like, if they miss part of the day, so say they come an hour late because they have a dentist appointment, or they leave an hour early, does that factor into these pieces, or is it only full days?
No, it does. So that, yeah, that impacts because it's percentage of their school they missed as well. Yes.
Do you have state data from eighteen to twenty-one?
To compare, I do, and I can add a slide in this when I update it. Would you guys like that?
I mean, is it pretty, is it similar? I mean, is it, I mean, two thousand and eighteen is six point one, is it sixteen point one?
Throughout the entire nation, there has been an increase in the number of truants, the number of attendance concerns. So this is not alone to Manuka, this isn't unique to us, this is a more nationwide concern. But I could add in the comparison as well.
Just from the state, from twenty-one down to eighteen.
Yep.
And obviously, it's post-COVID, I don't know.
Exactly. Because you have mental health days now, right?
Yes, they do. And keep in mind that attendance data is collected no matter if the absence is excused or not excused.
So just to clarify, this is, that number is the percentage, it's ten percent? So we're talking about, what, eighteen school days or something like that? Is that so above that?
Yes.
So you're missing more than, eighteen or more days?
Within the last one hundred and eighty days of the school, of school terms, yes. So it goes back even, like, so if my son missed his eighteenth day in October, it goes back to the past October.
And so even if we throw out the middle of that chart that was very off for lots of reasons, you're looking at six percent, seven percent, and eighteen and nineteen versus ten percent more now. So like you said, that's statewide, nationwide. That's, this chart is striking to me. That's a lot of students missing a lot of days. You know, once you get past those eighteen, twenty days of school, that's a significant amount of school. So that's very interesting to me, like you were saying, how it would look versus the state. Thank you for putting this chart in this, this was striking when I looked through this.
So now I'm curious, with kids, with test scores going down, I mean, we attributed a lot to COVID. You know, they were in there, but now, I mean, we're three years past COVID.
We are.
Are the test scores, I don't remember what the test scores overall, have we?
Overall, our academic scores are strong. And again, similar to what we were talking about with the Five Essentials data, we're meeting the thresholds of what's expected, but we want to continue to push higher. So similar to what we're seeing in Five Essentials, we're scoring in the okay or the above-okay range, but we want to get even better. So similar for our academics. And again, we're not below the state average. So there are schools that are on watch lists for attendance. We're not one of those schools, but we're not okay with this either. We have, like you said, this is a concerning amount of students that are missing school days, and it has to be eighteen days. So think of that, how many days that that is they're missing throughout the school year and to be attributed to this list.
Wait, so they have each student has missed eighteen or more days to even be counted in this?
In this percentage, yes.
That's a lot.
That's a lot. And we know the correlation between academics, we know the correlation to school belonging, and every other aspect, social, emotional growth, development. So it is concerning, but sometimes, you know, like, I don't know. I think we've fallen into a new pattern, just in education in general with school attendance, that I know we're not alone in having to work against this or work with this.
I had two thoughts about this. What, do you, I can't remember what year the law passed for the five mental health days.
I want to say it was twenty, like, early, like, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, but don't quote me on that, and I can find that, and I'll put a little, like, post-it note on one of these slides.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty, and I throw out, you really, I mean, it wasn't the same, you know, with missing school or whatever. But. But my, my next thought is, when we have a conversation, so with the first answer you gave me, that even a part of the school day missed counts, right?
Yes.
I've heard so many.
As a partial.
As a partial. But I've heard so many people say, oh, they're missing for an appointment, I'll just keep them home. So maybe some of that communication is, you know, every hour that you're there matters.
And there, yeah, there's data that we can share that I think that's, that's something that the buildings are going to start working on from, I don't want to say like a grassroots effort, but more of like a personal effort of reaching out to parents and connecting with them and helping them understand that every minute of our instruction truly is important. And you guys saw our administrative teams worked throughout the vast majority of the school year to truly maximize our instructional minutes. And that's one of the reasons why. We want our students to be learning and effectively and engaged learning as much as possible. And when you do have students out, and we understand, like, an appointment is necessary, that's going to happen, but we still want the students back in school. Yeah.
That was 2022 for the mental health days.
Okay.
So just, just to close my thought on this is that I think it is our responsibility, I know everybody here does, to do for the students everything all at once, right? That in, in 2018, if I missed school, it was an email and a worksheet, and I'm reading a book now, they all have the computers and they're attached 24/7 to the class, hopefully. So it's a very different feel to miss a day today than it was in 2018, when, when you might not get that assignment for four days. And so today, that responsibility on us to make sure that we're making every, and I know we do, I'm just saying that it's a different environment to be able to, you could miss a day and have your, you know, anecdotally, my son could miss a day and have his work done before I get home. And that's different than 2018. So to make sure that we're doing everything all the time is, is a challenge, but I think we, we can, we can do that.
Yes. And we don't want to be punitive and punishing students for missing days, but we want to make it more important, we want, do want it to be important for them to attend school every day.
I do think it's interesting that 2022 was when we passed the five mental health days.
Yes.
I did a quick search, it was January 2022 when that public act went into place.
That is an interesting tidbit, I didn't think of that either, so.
Wasn't 2022 when the students started going back to school and starting on the remote?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that also makes me a little curious about the 4.2, because everybody was remote learning at that time.
That's why I was kind of saying that year doesn't really count to me, because you just had to log in to be present versus actually be in the building. So, yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah, 2022 was when most schools were fully back in.
Correct.
So with 21, there was a lot more leniency with that, with that attendance piece, so.
There was leniency, and we're also, I feel like we handle the common cold differently than we did prior to COVID. And so kids are staying home more and not infecting whole classrooms as much.
Yeah, we definitely want families to keep their kids home when they're ill and contagious. But we also, we know there's a whole lot more probably going into those absences. Sometimes there's that unavoidable, you're out for five days because you're just that sick.
Yeah.
Other times, you know, there's a lot of other reasons probably for attendance concerns. But it is an education piece, and it is, I think, a renewed push with outreach and education that we have to do with students and with parents. And it's definitely something that's high on our radar.
Did you find a correlation, I mean, you can see, we're actually, it's improving. So that's good to see from 22 to 24. But did you have the data for, there were this many sick days, there were this many mental health days, there were this many appointments? Do you have access to that data, that breakdown? We could pull all of that data additionally. I mean, you don't have to, but how did that look? This is, this is strictly from the Illinois School Report Card, so I have not analyzed, like, each year what that looks like. Gotcha. But that's something that we could also look at.
That's a good point. It would be interesting to target education based on what our highest percentage of reason for missing, you know, is.
And we can, we can share with you a breakdown that, because everything goes into this attendance, because it's with or without excuse for basically any reason, if you're suspended, if you're sick, if it's just a matter of are you in school or not? So we can share that with you because there, there's definitely some trends there, and then there's a whole lot of.
There have been more situations with behavior. So we're having more students miss because of behavior. And then that's creating an uptick. I mean, you know, what is it? What's the reason?
So can you drill it down to either which building or which grade has a higher percentage or a lower percentage?
Not through the Illinois State Report Card, but that is something our buildings can do specifically, is looking at their own reports. Yes.
Are they doing it now?
We can do that through Power School, so that's something that they've started to look at. And then Erin, Mr. Souza has also created like a notification to help identify students that have many absences or many absences in a row that will flag and be like, hey, principal, know that this student has been out a lot the last couple of weeks.
And we know the building teams, they are aware of their students who are missing, and they are thinking of ways, okay, how do we do more? Or how can we, you know, kind of refresh our efforts for outreach? So they are very aware. I was even sitting with the principal a few days ago and had, you know, looking at the academic IAR data broken down and then looking at student attendance next to it. And you can see where these students here in this van missed 20 days. Imagine if we had them with us for that time, they could be meeting standards. But we are doing the best with what we can when we have them. So there's a definite overall awareness and action, I think, based on looking at those data pieces together.
Yes. Yeah, so it is something that our buildings are looking at, and they're creating their own, their own programs, their own ways to continue to do that outreach, that attendance campaign.
We do withhold, like, you can't miss, you know, a half a day and then go participate in your sport or whatever, is that?
It depends on what portion of the day. There is very strict guidelines for IESA, Illinois Elementary School Association, on how much you can miss, the time of day, how that all works out. Yes. Some other data that our teams are looking at specifically at the building base level are restraint and timeout, behavioral data, discipline data, their threat assessment data. And then also looking at, you know, individual based classroom CHAMPs data and collection of data through observation tools from the school leadership teams as well. So those are things that the buildings are looking at as well. Some of our different initiatives that we have taken on this past year, through the MTSS program, they completed an MTSS needs assessment, strategy review, and updates, led by our instructional coaches, Ms. Patrick and Ms. Klosowski. They reviewed our current MTSS protocol and worked to streamline that throughout all of the buildings. They've created some really great resources that will be rolled out at the beginning of the year with our full building teams. They put it through many layers of working with our interventionists, then working with classroom teachers, then working with our specialists, and then working with our administrators to make sure that we're hitting all of the different components of MTSS. Our kindergarten social emotional curriculum and second step development. Last year, they worked with Ms. McCarrow to create curriculum maps for kindergarten, specifically targeting those ready to learn behaviors for our youngest learners, because we have seen also an increase in the number of students that are not attending preschool. We used to have about 80 to 85% of our students attend preschool prior to coming to kindergarten, and we've seen a decrease in that number. So we took that upon our kindergarten teams last year, working with our social workers, and created a really strong kindergarten social emotional learning curriculum to help increase those ready to learn behaviors. So when they're in the classroom, they're learning those behaviors that they may have typically learned in a preschool program. That was very successful this year, and we had a very high feedback from those teams. Those teams have continued to meet throughout this year and improve that curriculum. Then our social emotional program has also come together throughout this school year to talk about needing to increase what we're doing within our core instruction. So you'll see as I talk in our, what are we doing next? We're working on increasing and creating more of those programmings throughout the rest of our buildings. So the rest of the grade levels, kindergarten, I'm sorry, first grade on up have come together already this summer with Ms. McCarrow to create curriculum maps for that social emotional component, as well as resources to increase there as well. We know that the best core, the best intervention is actually the best core instruction, so that's something that we've been working with, with our staff, is understanding that we want to increase the core. In addition, we're working on professional development within that social emotional learning curriculum, increased our behavior supports, as well as creation of the, the behavior intervention programs. So we have also added behavior specialists to our programs this year, and you guys just approved the stipend for the board certified behavioral analyst, which is a really strong addition to our teams this year that will help improve those behavioral supports even more. This past year, all of our staff completed CHAMPs training, the very initial, very initial program of that, which understand, which helps them to, we call it CHAMP out their classroom. If you walk throughout the buildings, you'll see that CHAMPs acronym throughout the entire building, which just helps students and staff understand what are the expectations during this specific activity or within this specific environment. So we completed all staff, did the CHAMPs training, and then our building leadership teams did three days of building leadership training, so they can continue to foster that environment, as well as complete observations and utilize the tools, the walkthrough tools, to help increase the staff's effectiveness in the CHAMPs program. We'll be increasing, or we'll be continuing that throughout next year as well. And then we've also been working on building that school security officers program. That's something that Ms., or Dr. Massey has been working with our building base teams and our school security officers to enhance what they have already brought to our schools and create more uniformed procedures. And then looking at our future planning initiatives, some of these I've already hit on. As we said, the, we know that the best instruction is, or the best intervention is core instruction. So we've worked on research-based curriculum alignment and implementation in the social emotional learning environment. We'll be strengthening our tier one instruction across the district and implementing morning meetings and advisory throughout each of the grade levels. So that was something that was usually pretty more unique to elementary, those younger elementary programs. But we know that that is going to be successful when students feel a part of the community, that classroom community, they have a more successful year. And those morning meetings and advisories are going to bring that community feeling to the classroom. Again, increasing our safety and security by the updated reunification plans and crisis management documents. That was shared out with our administrative teams earlier this summer. And then we've done even more training, more work with the regional office to help increase our teams' capacity there. We'll be focusing on professional learning communities, or you'll often hear those abbreviated to PLCs, and building collaborative teacher teams focused on data and outcomes and increasing student achievement. And then the student outcomes will be focusing on improved academic and social emotional growth through MTSS and CHAMPs, and then utilizing assessment data to target interventions that students require. I think I hit on everything there. This looks a little bit more at our professional development framework. And you'll see that we've put this into three kind of columns or three tiers of district-wide focus areas, building level implementation, and then administrative support structure. So at our district, we're looking, really looking at increasing and focusing on our curriculum and strengthening that core curriculum, not only academic, but also that social emotional component, focusing on our behavior management systems and providing professional development there, and then effective communication practices through our newsletter, and then the involvement of Parent Square to increase that communication component from home to school and school to home. In the building level implementation, they're really going to be focusing on those professional learning communities and those PLCs, utilizing data, having teachers go in and observing one another, those peer observation components as well. And then for administrative support, we've recognized the need for creating a new admin orientation or mentor program to help our newer, our newer administrators not only feel a part of our district, but understand how to overcome, you know, those obstacles that you might face as a new administrator. What do you do when you have to call a parent for discipline? How do you work through that? You know, working through some of those different obstacles that they don't necessarily teach you in, in school. So working through that, we'll have monthly leadership professional development opportunities as well. And then our student services teams will continue to collaborate and meet on a weekly basis to continue to foster that, the connectedness between all of the different facets of student services.
So we're doing a lot of this now, correct?
We are, we are, but we're, we're really focusing a lot on that core instruction and what can we do on the core. And with that, there, like, that bleeds out into the professional learning communities and building that. And then it builds into our better managed, behavior management systems. And then that builds into increasing the capacity of our leaders and increasing the capacity of the teachers to have those conversations. So we are, but we're really focusing on how can we, how can we build it up more?
And by core, just making sure that every child is getting that. So if we're talking about social emotional learning, or we're talking about community building, it's not just happening maybe in some classrooms or a little bit in these classrooms, it's being more, just stronger with the implementation universally, so that every child's getting that opportunity. And we're supporting all teachers if they need support in implementing those things.
I just kind of thought for Mr. McGowan, a quick thing on, because you kind of focused on the kindergarten SEL. We saw a huge decrease in students that were coming to us from preschool, like, they were not going anywhere before kindergarten. And so just the basic, like, how to sit still, how to keep your hands to yourself, how to wait your turn, how to stand in a line.
How to hear no.
How to hear the word no, yeah. They didn't have those skills. So they really had to kind of hone in on kindergarten and kind of start the year off with some of those skills, and that's kind of what that is referring to. So that's a little bit different from some of the other things we talked about, I think.
Correct, yes. All right. And then I would be remiss if I didn't celebrate some of our summer enrichment programs that totally go into that connectedness of strategic plan two. So you can see our math camp, our reading camp, and our summer enrichment just finished. Math camp, you guys, these are pictures that are like actually from the camp, so you guys can see, math camp was a lot of hands-on, real-world application of math, playing games and utilizing math within those games, making it fun. Reading camp was a lot of like literacy skill building and reading comprehension, but making it engaging and fun, so students see the, the fun side of learning. And then our summer enrichment really focused on student, the student-centered or student-preferred activities. We focused a lot on that STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and math, but then also had athletic camps within there. But the athletic camps kind of talked about how those components of STEAM fall into the, into the athletics. You can see a couple of pictures here, they were a couple of my favorite ones, they were more of the artsy ones. So the one was art modeling, and then the one where it's a picture of the cake, that is actually food sculptures. So they made sculptures of food throughout. We had a gardening camp, just a lot of really fun hands-on activities. I ran into one of the summer enrichment teachers over the weekend, and she was telling me, she's like, it is like my favorite week of the year. She's like, I absolutely love it. She taught the gardening one, and she's like, to hear students have a passion of gardening already at the age of like sixth, seventh grade is just amazing. So just some really great opportunities that we're able to provide to our students. The funding through, for the enrichment program comes through our Title I grant. So that's, that's a little bit of connection with Ms. Robinson's presentation about where our funding is coming from. And I do want to give a final plug for our summer bridge program, which helps connect the students to next year. So like my, my daughter that just left seventh grade, she'll be enrolled in the eighth grade summer bridge program to help her get some skills ready for stepping into eighth grade next school year. That enrollment is open through the 27th of this month, so parents, if you are interested in that, please sign up. Again, that's a free program. Students will connect with that information and the teachers virtually, so it's not anything you need to bring your kiddos to, even if you have a summer vacation planned, they can still connect through that as long as they have Wi-Fi access. summer vacation planned, they can still connect through that as long as they have Wi-Fi access. And then just, just to bring it all together, this kind of takes us into some of our next steps and our key takeaways, and I'll invite any of the district cabinet team to jump in here because this is a lot of, you'll see a lot of these pictures or hear a lot of these words that we've been talking about to, that have helped us step into that next level within our district. So we're utilizing Panorama to help capture more of our, the community voice, so the teacher, the parent, the students. We also can utilize Panorama, there's a component where it could replace DSA, and it's a little bit more dynamic than what DSA offers. We can dive into the data stronger through Panorama, so we're exploring that option. But our goal that's connected to Strategic Plan One is really being able to, to increase student voice in what's going on within our district. So that's our way to kind of evaluate and analyze what we're currently doing and the effectiveness of that. Within professional development, again, you're going to really see a lot over the next year focusing on curriculum, behavior management, those PLCs or professional learning communities. You'll see a lot of professional development at the building level with our safety component. I Love You Guys is the reunification plan and the, kind of the, the pictures that you'll see throughout our buildings, it helps, what, what do they call that, Sarah? Sorry, the standard response protocol, thank you. That really helps us. Everybody knows the same, similar, rather than needing to flip through a 40-page flipbook to know what do I do in the case of a tornado, we have that standard response protocol. We give you this directive, this is the response. And then when we talk about our implementation, rolling out the enhanced programs with fidelity. So again, our core instruction that we're utilizing fidelity. Second step, that we're, we're creating one unified expectation of that and that it's going to be implemented throughout, consistently throughout our district. The Safe and Civil Schools, this year will continue with any new staff, will go through CHAMP's training at the beginning of the year. And then we'll be doing site visits with the Safe and Civil Schools presenters where they'll be working on, okay, talk to me about what specifically does your building need? I'm going to come and do some observations and I'm going to help you develop, develop a plan to address that. For monitoring, we're looking at tracking progress and adjusting what we need. Again, that panorama and that student voice is really going to assist there. And then one of our other focuses is how can we get more children involved and connected to our schools because we know when a student is connected to the program, to the school, they're going to perform better in all aspects. One of the things that I leaned over to Rachel and I said, oh, I want to celebrate, our track program this year had our first wheelchair athlete, which is really cool. So IESA allows wheelchair athletes for two events, one is the shot put and one is the 100-meter dash. So our student reached out to us, I think, Jason, was it the day, two days before track started? And reached out and said, I would like to participate in track, so we pulled up the information on how do we, how do we do this? Great. And then we realized that our, our shot put area, the ring was not ADA compliant, so I went to Mary and our buildings and grounds and I said, okay, guys, we need to make a ramp and a platform that's ADA compliant. And I think within a week, we had that ramp ready to go. It was amazing and, yes. So we have a few more students that might be able to participate in that as they get older through the school years, so we have that available. We hope that our wheelchair athlete continues, she's graduated and will go on to high school now, so we hope that she's able to continue in high school. But that's another way that we're looking at, like, what more can we do to connect students to our schools? So that's just a celebration to end on there.
I just wanted to mention, keeping it very generic, but the, the individual you're talking about, and I was at a lot of the track events, and I think it needs to be said that this is not about one person. The, the other students come a lot, there was such camaraderie and excitement and it, it was just to see the other people get involved as well, and it really lit up the entire event to see people supporting each other and, and being really included. So I think that it, it is not just a specific individual experience, it's a, you know, the friends of someone and the friends and the parents and the friends of other people. It, it really is a community event, so I think that's important to mention too.
Yeah, definitely something to celebrate. So, any additional questions?
Just on that note, I just wanted to say, I know, I know, you know, as we add things in, it's finding a staff member to do it and all these types of things, but all the efforts that have been made in our buildings to have things, not just sports, but even outside of sports for kids to feel like they belong. I know I have a kid who's not a sports kid and he's found, I mean, he was gone every day because there was something to do all the time, and I think that's really important. And that's a good bridge into 111 because I think they do a good job with that as well. So, you know, just thank you for continuing to push for these activities for students to be included, but that track story is awesome. That's really neat.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, do you guys have anything for board updates today?
I have a question, maybe Ms. Massey can answer. I noticed that we increased substitute pay. So how do, how does that, so are we pretty much now back in, with everybody else equal or are we maybe a little bit ahead to get people to come like us more?
First of all, you're stealing my thunder a little bit.
Dr. Massey, tell us about subpay.
Right, yeah, so we, we do an ongoing, just checking our comps, right, looking around in the area, and we knew that we had fallen behind a little bit, but we ran into that, you know, Mary and I sat down and, and how do we, how do we keep people, you know, we're going to outpace folks, right? We've got to look at, you know, what we're paying our teachers, what that breaks down to, our aides, our associates, just making sure that we're not, you know, dumping money into that pond and then, you know, the coffers run dry. So we did do an analysis and, and we are losing folks to other districts, so we did increase it, and that puts us right about where other folks are, a little bit ahead of some, some areas, like Shanahan, I know, you know, they are, Troy, the high school, you know, our argument has always been, we've never, even before this rat race started, we were never competing for the same people that, that go to the high school to sub. So, you know, that's, that's kind of a cross that off. Shanahan, same thing, you know, folks go over there because they live in that community, it's convenient for them. Troy, so what we just tried to do was up the ante a little bit to get people to want to come back here again, rather than, you know, I could drive five more miles and make 50 more bucks. So, yeah, we're going to give it a go again. We've increased it what we feel to be pretty competitive and consistent with what everybody does around, and we're hoping to see positive results come, you know, following we start ringing people at four o'clock in the morning to come and sub in our buildings. So that's our hope, fingers crossed.
Any other board topics tonight?
All right, if not, we will move on to our administrative reports.
Dr. Massey, did you have any other updates for us?
Stretching that new knee out. No, one of the big things that the principals do, and Jay's here in the audience, and I'm sure he's going to be nodding his head in the background there, at the end of the year, they are just filling positions like crazy. So we've got some vacancies still, but I can tell you, from the time we closed today, we have 13 vacancies across the district, and that could be a cook, that could be a campus monitor, that could be Mr. Souza's network technician, so it's everybody all included, we have 13, and by the time I sit before you today, I've got 11. So they're filling them and, and we're trying to gobble those up before the summer months really get too far away from us. The one that I am itchy about a little bit, and we are getting super creative, is Spanish at the junior high, and again, he'll be nodding his head, he is as well. The, the pool of candidates is not great to begin with. You guys have heard me maybe over the years talk about APLA-TRAC, and that's where we post our positions, and it pools into this consortium that is the Grundy Kendall area. We have our jobs that are defined, you know, these are the ones that we have posted for Manuka, and that one certainly sits there. But then there's this thing called the position pool, and it's basically anybody that has ever applied for anything through APLA-TRAC, and you can drill down by, you know, you're talking middle school, you want to drill into the high school teachers, like, look, I've jumped into the position pool and I found anybody that has, you know, Spanish over the last probably five years. We've cold-called folks, Jason's been cold-calling folks as well. You know, I've reached out to the high school, they're, they posted a position as well for a Spanish teacher, so we're competing directly with, with their folks as well. When I talked to Jeff Easton, he said, I'm worried about this one, you know, there's not a lot of folks out there, and I said, I know, I'm trying to get ahead of you. We have blasted it out to our families in the communities, hoping that maybe somebody's got somebody in the weeds that wants to get back in the game of teaching and, you know, is interested in doing that. We've called the ROE to talk about licensure and maybe how to get creative with somebody on a provisional. So we are casting that net wider than we usually have to for most. Jason and I were talking today about the, we don't want to get there, but what ifs, you know, what if we can't find someone and how do we do that and what does that look like? So I just wanted to be really transparent and let you know that we are throwing the kitchen sink at it, and we'll keep you guys posted as the next couple of weeks and month kind of go by, but there is a genuine concern about finding a candidate for that position at this point because, you know, we've come up goose eggs so far, and, and we've certainly been, we've been trying, so.
Are there any other positions? There's just a Spanish teacher?
That's it, yeah. All of our other licensed teaching positions are filled. You know, sometimes we'll have late summer, somebody will, yeah, that's what I was just saying, yeah, we'll have somebody who, you know, their husband gets transferred, wife gets transferred, life takes them somewhere else, and we'll get a late-season kind of resignation, but, you know, at this point, our principals feel like they got a pretty good handle as they step away for their summer break. It's just that Spanish position at this point that we're really keeping an eye on and trying to, you know, get creative with. So, there we go. Otherwise, thank you guys very much, and I'm going to go sit back down.
Thank you. Dr. Staub, Ms. Robinson, I think we're good. Mr. Souza, anything from you tonight? All right. Oh, a thumbs up and no presentation or no music, but if he were up here, he'd be telling you about Parent Square and us getting the word out about Parent Square. We'd both be telling you about our website refresh that actually just went live before the meeting began, so we'll be continuing the refining of that kind of below the surface, but the new look is a much more accessible and crisper and more modern-looking, and we want it to be more accessible and user-friendly. So, there it is, all right. So we are rocking and rolling with our new template, our fresh look, and we'll, we'll be letting parents know about that and letting them know about Parent Square, so on the communication front, we're keeping that going. On the transportation front, we are in a good place, we have a meeting with routing, specific to routing, so we are getting into the final stages of feeling very good for the fall and ensuring that we have all routes covered, and we're looking at efficiencies and how long students are on from start to finish, and then ensuring we have a good lead time for our drivers to, for the Manuka drivers to be able to pick those routes. So we're still working collaboratively behind the scenes, communication to our families regarding transportation comes much later in the summer, but I just wanted to share with you so you can rest assured that we are on pace to have a successful unification for Manuka Transportation. And I think finally, health, life, safety, we just got notification this afternoon, I had shared it with President Conquest and the board regarding a successful health, life, safety audit for all of our buildings, so kudos to our leaders and our building teams, maintenance for their efforts in making sure we have safe learning environments and our health, life, safety front. And then registration, Mr. Souza and I were talking about that this morning, we're, we're whittling down the numbers, but there's still a good number of families that we're attempting to reach to get them going with the registration process, so we know that the students are coming back. I think it's pretty typical compared to years prior, but nonetheless, we want to make sure we're fully prepared for our kids, so we're continuing to spread the word, including with our kindergartner registration. So we're definitely down with the kindergarten number, so spread the word for a child who will be five on or before September 1st, please sign them up, we'll be ready and waiting for them in the fall. And the summer efforts continue all around the district, we'll bring you some great updates in July. We'll also be touching more upon our safety and security efforts as we get ready to amp up in the new school year, and our architect will be joining us in July as well to provide an update on the work that's going on with facilities assessment that's going on across the district with our new architect partner. So that's it for now.
Any questions for Superintendent Kinder? We have no need for executive session this evening, so with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, and motion carries, we're adjourned.